Good evening and welcome to the regular Town Council meeting, November 18th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Chair President Phillips.
Present.
Counselor Sims. Counselor Willis.
Present.
Counselor Kusch.
Present.
Counselor Segal.
Present.
Counselor Dearborn.
Present.
Counselor Hamblin.
Present.
All right, we'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes of the October 7th regular Town Council meeting and the November 10th special Town Council meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, second by Counselor Kusch. Any changes, amendments, discussion? All right, all those in favor? Now, this is a time for open public communications. This is a time for the public to come and speak on items that are not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak on and about something, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm Carol Mulker of Lawn Avenue. Very happy to be here and to talk to you in person how certain anti-law enforcement policies are blighting our neighborhood. In 2011, your council wrote an excellent stormwater law for new developments. It clearly requires maintenance of drainage systems to prevent accidental spills of polluted water. Your law clearly names officials who, quote, "shall enforce this ordinance," end quote. Mandatory language. Your law even provides a simple fill-in-the-blank form for mandatory inspection and maintenance to be sent to the code office by May 1st every year. Your law is great, making enforcement simple, clear, and mandatory. Sadly, the town never enforced your law, so the drain systems abutting our backyard were never inspected or maintained. Instead, green belts were destroyed, stormwater pipes broke and got blocked, and the result has been thousands of gallons of pollution which the state considers too toxic for plants and animals flooding our neighborhood. Repeatedly turning our backyards into polluted lakes, our basements into polluted swimming pools, and drowning our oil tanks, furnaces, and electrical appliances in a polluted soup, as well as an electrocution hazard, and costing us many tens of thousands of dollars. Plus, who wants to eat vegetables grown in our contaminated backyards or expose kids and pets to playing in that soil? Every town official with stormwater enforcement duties under your law swore an oath to uphold the law. They just won't do it. Section 204.4 of your charter empowers you to investigate this anti-law enforcement policy, which violates your policy and their oath of office, because you're the top of the chain of command, except for the very top, which is we, the people. We pay the town high taxes because it's the law and it's our end of the social compact. Your end is making sure that your laws are enforced. Or what's the point of having laws? Now, if you see any error whatsoever in our facts, you should show us your facts on the record, just like I'm doing. So please do an investigation, put this on your agenda, and hold an open meeting with us. As you know, we've been asking you for that for over a year. Otherwise, we'll see you here next month and every month from now on, and we will never go away until your excellent ordinance is enforced.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name's Pete Mason. I just wanted to thank, I'm here on behalf of the Reed Allen Community Fund, and I just wanted to thank all our donors, sponsors that made, or that make our mission possible. We just wrapped up two fundraisers. The golf ball dropped, we raised $14,000, and then Casino Night, we raised about $55,000. So $69,000 for volunteer board of directors, pretty impressive. Last year, we gave back, I think it was right around $59,000 to our neighbors, people in need. So Counselor Dearborn, thank you for supporting us. Counselor Willis, trying to think, look around the room here. John Pompeo, thank you. Very, very generous, you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move on to Counselor Communications, and I'm going to start on my left with Counselor Kusch.
Thank you. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Hamblin?
I'm kind of new to this, so I'm not really sure what I should say in this segment. I guess two comments, though, maybe. I think I heard like 6,500 people in Gorham voted in the last election, which strikes me as a really good number for midterm elections. So I want to thank everybody for voting, paying attention, and really appreciate anybody who voted for me or anybody else, but it's great you show up. And one other comment, the Gorham Farmers Market is down to two days a week now, I think, two times a month. My wife goes all the time, and apparently there's more vendors than ever, and we buy a lot of stuff there. And you support local, you support the local farmers, local craft people, and you guys ought to check it out. It's indoors now, and it's a real positive thing for the town. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Willis?
Two PSAs this evening. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan is holding a public workshop this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, right here in Shaw Gym. It'll be an open house event. You have a chance to see the different survey results. There'll be kids' activities and refreshment, so hopefully people have another opportunity to get out and hear, have their voices heard about our plan for the Recreation and Parks Department moving forward. Also, the Gorham Village Alliance will be starting their Shop the Village campaign, supporting local businesses and reminding you to shop locally this holiday season. You'll have chances to drop your name in boxes at various local businesses. There'll be three total drawings, two winners each week, and then a big drawing at the end for a gift basket. So shop locally this holiday season and support our businesses. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Segal?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the people of Gorham for re-electing me. Looking forward to the next three years as well, and I hope to do right by everyone that voted for me. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Counselor Dearborn?
The Gorham Historical Society has an open holiday, open house holiday party at the Barn Cherry Hill, 3:00 to 5:00 on Sunday, December 7th. We'll have a cookie swap, holiday music, and a food pantry donation.
Thank you. Counselor Sims?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quickly, reminder that administrative offices for the town will be closed next week for Thanksgiving and the day after, celebration of that holiday. Robey Park, I think everybody that's watched that project throughout the summer can see that there's been progress made, but we just did not quite make it for the winter time. So we had some vendor issues with the specialized equipment. That entire playground will be getting a rubberized playing surface that requires warm temperatures to pour. There's also a water feature that'll be going in, in the spring with a ton of planting, so stay tuned to that. We have some pretty good AI renderings now. We love AI. We also have policies on it, but we'll be putting out a formal notice on it and hope to see that conclude in the spring. The town's Holiday Light Parade will be November 30th, from, as it always is, Main Street down to the Municipal Center. That includes our tree lighting. Winter Sand, because we're there, is available at Public Works. Every year, we get phone calls, people aren't aware of it, but at Public Works, you can take two buckets per storm. And I also would like to thank the Public Works Department, as well as the Rec Department, for their efforts in starting our holiday decorating process, which is very time-consuming for the town. So thank you to them.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to the School Committee Report.
Hi, everyone. Nicolea Fisher, School Committee Chair. Want to start off tonight with a couple of acknowledgements. The School Committee wishes to extend sincere thanks to the Gorham Fire Department and the Gorham Police Department for their swift and professional response during a recent gas leak that occurred at Narragansett Elementary School. The immediate assistance allowed us to safely evacuate and dismiss students and staff, ensuring that all students arrived home safely and were able to return to school the following day. We're grateful for this partnership and their dedication to community safety. We'd also like to thank the Town of Gorham Public Works Department for their assistance in advertising open maintenance positions over the last several weeks. Strategically placed sign on South Street drew a significant attention, and we're pleased to share that both positions have now been filled with qualified candidates. We appreciate the collaboration and support. Thank you to the Town Council members who were able to attend our annual dessert and discuss event, which serves as a kickoff to our FY '27 budget process. For those who are unable to attend, there is a full recording available on our district website. Visit the district homepage, select the superintendent's blog, and open the post-dated November 14th. The complete agenda and related materials are also available on there. The School Committee will continue its budget work on November 25th, focusing on establishing a budget FY '27 target. Following the determination, the superintendent will begin developing a proposal aligned with that target, and per the budget development timeline, the superintendent's initial proposed budget will be presented at the first School Committee meeting in February. Moving on to the Gorham Public Pre-K Partners, we'll host a Public Pre-K Fair on December 4th from 5:30 to 6:30 at Narragansett Elementary School. All current and new public pre-K partners will be present to provide families with information about their programs, including curriculum, assessment practices, and preparation for future success. We strongly encourage any Gorham family with a child who will be four years old by October 15th, 2026, to attend this free and informative event and to learn more about the public pre-K opportunities available. On Friday, November 21st, the Gorham High School will host teams of teachers from across the region for a special night highlighting innovative student learning using iPads. Gorham High School teachers and students will showcase creative and meaningful instructional practices for educators across the state. The annual GHS Holiday Concert will take place on December 8th at 7:00 PM. We invite all members of the community to attend to what is always a impressive and uplifting performance. Speaking of AI, the Gorham schools are in the process of developing AI handbooks for staff, students, and families. These resources will articulate our belief around, about appropriate and effective use of AI in education while ensuring responsible practices and protection of student data. A community-wide survey has been distributed to gather input from staff, students, parents, and community members regarding current AI use. If you've not yet participated, we encourage you to do so. There is a survey link and a QR code, and your feedback is greatly appreciated as we work to shape clear and supportive guidelines around AI use in our schools. And finally, just a reminder that we will be having a joint School Committee and Town Council meeting on December 16th at 6:30.
Thank you. Any questions? Yep.
Just to clarify, so the normal workshop, because of Thanksgiving, is on Tuesday?
It is.
Okay.
Yes. Thanks, Janet.
Counselor Willis, go ahead.
Two quick things. I don't think we've been together since we crowned a girls' volleyball state champion.
Yes.
So congratulations to the girls' varsity volleyball team on winning another state championship. And then also, I'm curious, and I don't know if we could do it maybe for next month, but enrollment numbers, I think we talked about it a little bit last month, that as we get into kind of firming up the numbers for the year, if it would be possible to have in the report at the beginning of the year, like five-year checkpoints going back maybe 20 years, to just to show how those enrollment numbers have moved over the years. I think that's something that gets talked about a lot in the community, but not always the data is brought forward. So we'd be interested in seeing that.
Absolutely. We can do that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing number one on item 2025-11-5. Public hearing, they hear comments to consider dissolving contract zones for the following parcels. Map 3 Lot 22.002, map 3 Lot 22.403, map 3 Lot 22.502 to 507, map 4 Lot 6.008, map 4.Lot 9, map 6, Lot 31, map 6, Lot 38, map 6, Lot 30, map 6, Lot 36, map 6, Lot 34.003, one, map 6, Lot, map 6, Lot 19.001, administrative sponsor.
All right, public hearing number one is now open. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
Proposed order 25-110. Order that the Town Council dissolve contract zones for the following parcels. Map 3 Lot 22.002, map 3 Lot 22.403, map 3 Lot 22.502 to 507, map 4 Lot 6.008, map 4 Lot 9, map 6 Lot 31, map 6 Lot 28, map 6 Lot 30, map 6 Lot 36, map 6 Lot 43.001, and map 6, Lot 19.001.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Segal. All right, I'm going to have the Town Manager give a quick explanation of this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as the council's probably aware, we've had a history of contract zones in South Gorham. They were originally put in place to accommodate zoning that had not yet been implemented for the comprehensive plan or as the comprehensive plan was rolling out. So there's a lot of contract zones down there. The base zoning now, in most cases, is better than the contract zone zoning that was put in place at the time. We were starting to get piecemeal requests for individuals to dissolve their contract zones and go back to the base zoning, and the council instructed staff to put out a blanket letter and say, hey, who wants to do this? We're going to do it all at the same time, because the council, I think, was getting bogged down in individual requests. So what you have before you are those that came back and said, yep, I want to do it, when we do it all at the same time, and if you approve this this evening, you would adopt a new zoning map that would reflect that, and the contracts would be dissolved. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Tom Poyer is here as well this evening.
Just for clarification, this doesn't have to go to the planning board like the creation of a contract zone does. It just...
It's, pardon, back to the council, and Tom can speak to that process.
Right, okay. No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I was...
Yep. So this will be the final step for the Town Council.
Okay. I think I was the only counselor that was here that probably had to vote on some of these contract zones when everybody came, one after another, so I think this is a good way to compact it and do this all at once rather than just have separate items. So I appreciate staff reaching out to the people who own the parcels. Any comments, questions?
Just one question to clarify. We're doing this to simplify our lives, basically, and people in the town who's developing life? I mean, this is something that should be viewed as a positive.
Yes, I think it's because the underlying zoning is now better than it was beforehand.
Okay.
So I think that that's what we were moving to when we did these the first time. There was no push to rezone South Gorham. There was none of that. There wasn't, the comprehensive plan wasn't updated. So the, I think the individual owners saw other people getting contract zones, saying that they wanted to be able to do those things on their property, and now the underlying zoning that we have in place now is actually better than these contract zones, so.
Any downsides of doing this?
Can you think of any?
Thank you. Some of the contract zones have provisions that a contribution be made towards sewer connections. It's a relatively minor contribution in the scheme of a sewer system for South Gorham. That's a very small contribution. That's a component. The council loses control over what you had in that contract zone, but I, from my understanding, I think for the most part, the council implemented the zoning that you felt was appropriate to be with the comprehensive plan. So this would, I think there's less downsides. It would create less conflict when a property changes hands and they come in and say, well, I want to do this, and it's like, well, this isn't your zoning in the zone. This is your contract. And we've had a lot of confusion with that over the years, that now it should be a little simplified and everybody has the same zoning. Everybody that's opted out, there will still be, and I wish to point that out, there will still be contract zones down there. Some people have not come forward yet.
Thank you.
Counselor Kusch?
And that leads into my question. If I'm looking at the map, it looks like around eight contract zones. Do we feel like, I appreciate staff reaching out, do we feel like people just didn't answer or are using their contract zones?
That's a good question for Tom.
Good evening. Tom Poyer, Director of Community Development. We have since heard from two other applicants looking to move forward, and then some people have single-family homes. They don't want to spend any money, so they're not looking to do anything. So even though we identify we're sharing this cost regarding everybody coming forward, some of them just don't want to spend any money. And then there's other ones, like Cumberland Farms has two or three amendments to the contract zone, so I don't see that ever going away. So there will be some that will always be there, one or two. At some point, I see them all going away. I don't think they're relevant anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Sims?
A question that's been asked when prior contract zone rescindments came forward was a question around, there's some amount of staff time that went into this work. Were fees, fees were collected for the work that's been done on these contract zones? Is that fair to say? Is there, is there some sort of, have we lost time that we've, that we're throwing away here?
So at the time the council waived the site, the contract zone fee, and it was supposed to be rolled into a site plan review, those applicants that never went forward with site plan review have never paid a fee. I will say that all these contract zones are pretty much cookie cutter from one contract zone, so once the first one was done, it was probably relatively little time other than switching map and lot numbers.
Thank you. And on that point, probably also fair to say that one of the reasons that we chose to roll them all together was to save staff time, that doing them all individually was taking up a lot of time for you and for us up here.
Absolutely. Do I think this will stream time review time of us helping people through a development review process? Absolutely. Do I think it's simplified for the applicant? Absolutely. Again, we had a number of them that were kicking tires about a contract zone recidment. They just didn't want to do the fee on their own. So by putting them all together, I think it's a nexus to actually move this forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven ayes.
Item 2025-11-6, action to consider a rent control moratorium on mobile home parks. Counselor Segal sponsored. Proposed order 25-111. Order that the Town Council adopt an emergency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on mobile home park lot rental increases as follows.
Motion to waive the reading due to length.
Sure. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Sims. All those in favor of waiving the reading due to length? Seven ayes. And now we need a motion on the item?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Hamblin? All right, you want to...
Yep, happy to do so. This one specifically, the moratorium. Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. So I am, this is one half of the next item, which is that, so if you rewind, I believe that was the October meeting, we began the process of looking at updating our mobile home park ordinance, as well as raise the question of rent control with the bill coming in at the state level, looking at, does it make sense for us to utilize that bill for us to make something of our own? And with legal's recommendation, decided to put a separate item in this agenda, which is the next item specifically for rent control, so that it's very clear that this moratorium is attached to that. The idea here being that the state has looked at it, and we should be looking at it, and other towns are looking at it. This is becoming an increasing problem across Maine, and I want to make sure that we in Gorham are ahead of it. The unfortunate side effect is this here. 91-day moratorium on rent increases for just mobile home parks to give us the time to actually look at it because, well, we don't want what is unfortunately commonplace, which is right before an increase goes into effect, or right, I'm sorry, right before a rent control ordinance goes into effect places raising the rent considerably. So that's why I believe a moratorium makes sense, and while these items are connected, one and the other can happen as well. I think that is all the information, but also, of course, take questions from the council.
I would just like to mention to the council, if it's all right with the council, I think that there are people here in the audience that would like to speak on the item, so if that's all right, I will open it to public comment before we debate. So if anyone would like to speak on this item, we will open it for public comment. Just come to the podium and state your name. We'll give you about three or four minutes.
Hi, my name is Bob Filto. My wife and I both own patio park here in Gorham. I think if people are abusing the rent increases, it should be looked at individually. Also, we're a very small park, along with two others in Gorham, if I'm not mistaken. This could do a lot of damage to us. It's going to not allow us to keep up on maintenance for certain things in the park. We're a 55 and older park. We take care of our residents very good. We do whatever's asked by the town, the state. Everything is up to par. I think going forward, if it's not looked at carefully, it's going to do a lot of damage, and how are you going to turn back after that? So just keep that in mind. The other thing is, if people like us can't make money to survive with the park, we're going to end up selling it. And then who's going to buy it? Another corporate and raise their prices and beat the people down that live there? I don't think that's what any of us want. So that's what I got to say.
Thank you.
How you doing? I'm John Pompeo, and I own a little small park on Cressy Road. And it's the first I've heard of this rent control in the town. None of us are notified. We have state rules and rent control that we have to follow. Same with the upkeep. We said well said to keep the places up, and the tenants in my park have been there forever, and they don't, they stay there, so I think the state rules we have that we have to follow is more than, will work very well. It does work well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Pete Mason, 35, Robey Street. I think we're all probably sensitive to the elderly, fixed income, low income, no income. I mean, that's... I mean, that's in Gorham, Maine, across the nation, so I understand that. But I do have a couple of questions. So this emergency preamble, who wrote this?
We can, we can answer that when we're in our discussion.
Okay. So if you read the first three, whereas, I mean, almost sounds horrific. I'd like to hear tonight what evidence you have that these rental fees are going up. I don't know if that was a letter that was sent to residents, or what you have for information that says these are going up. Because when you read those first three, there's no doubt in my mind that someone's skyrocketing their fees. So that's the first thing. The second thing, I think John Pompeo mentioned, I can't believe this town, we have second-generation running Patio Park, we have third-generation running O'Brien Mobile Home Park, and you guys don't even have the respect to reach out to these guys to get input on not only this preamble, but a moratorium. I mean, this is their livelihood. It's a small business they're running. And here we are, we don't even reach out to them to get their input? That's just wrong, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Usually we just let the public speak once. I think we're all set, and I think the council's going to debate at this point, so we'll close the public comment. So Council Seagull, I don't know if you want to speak to the wording of this, or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is, it's, it's a little tricky, because I know some of those comments are based off of our next item as well. And so I kind of want to, I'm gonna do my best to separate them while still addressing everything here. So in terms of the unfortunate part of how we need to do things at the council is, if we're looking at something like rent control, we can't do things individually, right? We need to, like, for a moratorium, it needs to just be on all mobile home park rent increases. I will put, this is, this is for 91 days, so it's just three months. But unfortunately, it is, if we were to be super targeted, that's, well, that's just not allowed. I also think this is something that has come up in other towns, but looking at, I think it's completely reasonable to create exemptions for, whether it be 55-plus housing or specifically smaller, based on number of lots. Those are all things that can be looked at, but this is, of course, just the first step sending into it. The state laws were mentioned, and so currently, rulemaking is going into effect with the most recent laws passed. And that is what we are kind of keeping an eye on and seeing, that it could be very well that as this rulemaking happens, which is happening over the next couple of months, we don't need to do anything in Gorham. And so, lastly, when it comes to the exact language, I do want to say, some was written with the assistance of, of Legal for it.
All legal.
It was all legal, a lot of it, using similar language that other towns have used. But it was, well, yeah, written by Legal. Okay, I think I addressed all of those comments.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, I'm, sorry, do one more. I, I do want to apologize for not preemptively reaching out. I have been to the owners very specifically. I've been in conversation with a number of residents within the parks, and the second an owner reached out to me, second I read the email, I gave them a call back. So if you check your voicemail, you've got a voicemail from me. I try to be as open as I can, and I want to be in communication with you all. So please let this be, if this moves along, the start of a conversation, not the end of one.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
Did we all receive the email from the owners of Patio Park today? Did that come to everybody, or did that just come to me? I guess that's a question for the council. Do you mind, do you mind if I read a little excerpt of that, that I, I think it just came to me, and so I wanted to include those. I had some comments, but I thought the owners of Patio Park said it better than I could. "We try to do as much of the work in the park as we can ourselves. This in some small part helps us to keep our expenses lower, which helps us to keep the rent as low as we can for the senior residents who live there. The monthly lot rent increases, once a year, anywhere between $15 to $20 per month. We're not a big corporation-owned park, and we don't operate it that way, but we do have operating expenses like any other business. Park loan, trash pickup, plowing, utilities, insurance, road pairs, property taxes, upkeep for the clubhouse and clubhouse utilities." I'll paraphrase this part, but it basically talks about when COVID hit, they kept it low with everything going on. They've kept it low, but the expenses have not returned to pre-normal or pre-pandemic amounts. So we feel that the issuing rent control and a rent freeze is gonna put a further financial strain on some of the smaller parks that are already there, trying to run their parks the correct way to benefit the residents. My fear with this, if this was happening, and I guess this is a question through you to Council Seagull, if this was happening truly because there's stuff happening at the state level that we're allowing to play catch-up, I could get behind 91 days to allow the state stuff to kick in. I struggle with voting for this tonight, and frankly, for the next piece that we'll talk about, because of the unintended consequences that I think it will have on some of these other parks, that I want to protect some of the residents that we've heard a lot about, and I know what they're going through, but I don't want to do that at the detriment of some of these other parks and park owners that are not in the same situation as that big park that we've talked to quite a bit. So I guess I would leave that question to you in terms of the intent of the 91 days and what's happening at the state level.
Yeah, I think that was one of my questions, was the effective time of the things going on at state level. I don't know if you have the answer, or if, Evan, if you?
I do. I have the answer.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I just want to clarify it for people, like, what's going on at the state level, instead of, you know, so, it's up to you.
Is there a question for me?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be perfectly honest, I'm not a expert on the subject. That being said, my understanding is that the state level, some of this is going through rulemaking, there is an implementation of the LD that was sent to the council that's kind of takes a bite of the rent control apple, per se, with the state level. And then, speaking with Legal, when I asked them to draft the moratorium, the state's supposed to roll out a model manufactured housing, mobile home park, or rent control ordinance, should municipalities wish to adopt it. That's another task that was given through the rulemaking process. They haven't seen it yet, the state's slow, as we all know. And I think that's pretty much the extent of my knowledge on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? So I did the math. I did the math on the four trailer parks that exist in the town of Gorham. Their rents are anywhere from $4.25 to $6.10 a month. With the math that the state is going to implement, which is one, CPI plus 1%, which CPI, CPI is Consumer Price Index, which goes up and down, so I'm gonna just take a flat 3% rate, which is kind of what Portland does, South Portland does, and some other towns do. So with a $584 lot rent, which is the higher end of Friendly Village, the increase would be $17.52 a year. That being said, the smaller parks at $4.25 would be much less. $6.10 would be around $18 a month, a year. These smaller parks can't live on that $13 rent increase, it's just not possible, especially with Mr. Pompeo's, he's doing infrastructure to get it up to, not up to code, but get it better, and that is expensive. And it's just not possible for these trailer park owners to make a living with these kind of numbers. Thank you. Any other comments?
Can I ask? Go ahead.
Go ahead. I was gonna ask a question, too. Go ahead.
Just a question, I mean, what's, so the state is proposing something that she go forward in 91 days, maxing things out at CPI plus one?
They're gonna implement this before the end of the year.
Yep.
This is CPI plus, plus 1%.
Okay, so that would be the max increase each year.
That's the max. Or they're gonna do 3%, 10% every three years. You could do both. That's what they're, those were the rules that I saw.
Okay, and thank you. That's very helpful. It helps clarify for me a little bit, and I can see why that would be a real struggle for people, because the cost of construction nowadays is pretty high. So to be able to fix these parks up and continue maintenance is gonna cost a lot of money. But I guess my question to Councilor Seagull, what is driving this now? Are you afraid we need to get ahead of the curve, that the state's not gonna be, the state law's not gonna be good enough? Or is there some park out there who's looking at huge increases today that we're trying to address before the state actually happens?
So, I mean, what initially brought this to my attention was, well, a lot of the other towns looking at it, as well as numerous articles, I say numerous, but a few enough that I was like, oh, of mobile home parks raising rents dramatically before these, before it really comes into effect. And a number of towns have started to look at this. And so it was my thought of getting ahead of this, because the, I mean, the fact that we have owners that live around here, live in town, that can come to this meeting, is great. But I'm looking towards the future, and I'm looking towards what happens when it is owned by an out-of-state investor? What happens if it is owned by someone who does not care about people? Because we're, I mean, we're talking a lot about what will the owners do, but I'm kind of a little sad to hear we're really not talking about the residents and everything that they are dealing with here. Because this is the, I mean, you're stuck there. You put a trailer, you're renting, you can't, can't move that thing, and the rent costs are gonna go up and up and up. And if the, I mean, if the current owners in the room are doing what they are doing, like, staying under these rates already, then it's not a thing that they really even have to worry about. And we can just make sure that it is in place so that there aren't drastic increases. That's my logic for putting it forward.
And just for a little background, Council Hamblin, we have been contacted in the past before you were seated by residents of a larger mobile home park in Gorham, and about, and it's been public in the papers about, you know, a sale to a big corporation and things like that. So I think that's where I first heard of the issue.
Okay, one more comment, and then I'll be quiet, I promise. So I have this problem, I'm a business junkie, I read business all over the country, all over the world, all the time, I just do it. And there seems to be a trend across the country of somebody with a lot of money, a private equity, going in, buying up existing mobile home parks, and then just jacking the prices up. So, and it's happening in Maine and multiple places that have run about, and it's happening across the country. So it's certainly a trend that is concerning, I would think, to the owners of the smaller parks and to everybody living there at the same time. A 30% increase in cost is, is gonna drive a lot of people out, and we certainly don't want that as a community or as a town. So I appreciate the fact that we're addressing it, but I just wonder if we should wait for the town or the state thing to kick in, so we don't have multiple layers of ordinances.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could chime in with a couple of questions and comments. So, and just to make it clear, I mean, the action that we've taken in the last couple of meetings has very much been driven by Gorham residents of existing mobile home park who are under the threat of potentially facing larger increases. So, and I think that's the challenge here, is that we have some smaller parks with, with, you know, with good actors, local, local owners, that are, that are doing the kind of work that we want to see done. So I think the challenge here is to how do we, how do we, how do we take action here in a way that doesn't penalize the good actors, but also helps our residents address the challenges that are being created by the, by the bad actors, who are very real, and who's, as we said, they're already taking over numerous places in Maine. So, so I think this one is an interesting one. The question I had was the rulemaking process at the state level. What is, what is our, obviously, they're not gonna be held to our timeline, but what is our expected timeline of how much longer is it gonna take the state to determine the rules and put this thing into practice? Estimate, I guess. I mean, what has to happen? That has to go to the, which, which level of state administration has to deal with that? The Department of Housing, or Housing and Human Services? What is it? Yeah.
Thank you. I'll be 100% honest, I think I would be taking educated guesses with my answers, and I just want to be truthful with that comment.
Yeah.
I think you have a, the components of a state law that should go into effect at the end of the year, so you know that.
Yeah.
That's a, the state's supposed to, state doesn't always follow the state's rules.
Okay.
That being said, there is a hard deadline for them in the calendar year.
Okay.
To make implementations. So that's, that's a given, but beyond that, for anything else, I would be guessing as to what the state would do.
Can I make a possible suggestion? And it's Councilor Seagull's item, so wherever you want to take it, take it, but potentially tabling it and furthering the discussion, that if a vote is taken tonight and we have to wait a year to think about this again, it puts us in a position that we have to wait a year, and town manager's thinking, so maybe the idea's not a good one, and you can throw it out with the trash, but, you know, I wonder, and we'll kind of get to the next item when we get there, but some of this, to me, I'd love to see some more data behind it, that I hear about, you know, other towns that are doing it, how many other towns, and what's being implemented there. Some of these, Council Dearborn had some really nice numbers there in terms of what this would look like, but other numbers that, as Mr. Mason mentioned, like, some of the language in here makes it sound like this is a threat that's upon us right at this very moment. Is it real or perceived? So I think a little bit more time to engage with some of the park owners, have those conversations, and then come back to the table might help everybody feel like we got to a resolution that works for everybody involved.
I was having a similar thought. I mean, I think that we've, thus far, we have gotten some input from residents. We haven't gotten much input from owners yet. They're aware now, and they're making some initial input, and I think we need to take it into consideration. Our next meeting is two weeks away. I mean, it wouldn't be, I don't know how much more we, I think we could get more information in two weeks personally, but I don't know if we, do we, should we, what would be the protocol for, if we, if we made a motion to table it? Would we need to motion it, table it with a date certain, or we could motion it with a date uncertain, or?
I mean, we can, we can do either. I think it just leaves staff kind of, you know, we just need to give some direction, like, with the intent of it coming back in December, or intent of it coming back in January, or, because I don't always like to leave things out into the wind, but, but maybe we can, I don't know, timeline-wise, I don't know what staff, I don't know what we're directing them to do, or in the next two weeks, if it is for the December meeting. I guess that's the other piece of it, is I don't know what direction the town manager would need to say, okay, we'll bring this back.
Yeah.
Either written differently, meet with owners, but like, what's, I guess, we'd have to talk about that if we wanted to.
I suppose the one other potential, you know, sort of alternate action we could take here, does it need to be a 91-day moratorium? I mean, is it, 60 days, an acceptable amount of time? We're, we're, we're less than two months away from the end of the year.
You could do, you could do a less, well, I can double-check that, but I think you can do a less.
Yeah, we can't do any more, but I think we can do less. Yep.
That might be another sort of alternative. I mean, this is a challenging one. I feel like there is a, there is a legitimate reason to say yes to this, and I think we've, I think we've heard a couple of things tonight, where there's, there's a legitimate reason to listen to the owners of the parks here that are, that are good actors currently. I don't want those people to be penalized here. I don't necessarily think there's a huge penalty if we're talking about a 60-day moratorium. But, so, I don't know, does, does anyone have any comment based on that, that thought?
Council Kush? I definitely like the idea of tabling even to January, I guess, at this point. I feel like there's a whole lot of information, and yes, we got to read what's come to us so far, but I'd rather not see it voted down yet. I'd rather have some more information first. That's where I land.
Yep.
All right, so I guess we need a motion to table this until January? Do you have any other questions or comments before we do that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the council should just consider what you have before you. So you have an emergency, an emergency moratorium is an emergency ordinance, is very different than a moratorium. So a standard moratorium, and I think part of the reason that an emergency was selected by Councilor Seagull, was to address the timeframe at which you could timeframe at which you could implement it, covering the rest of the calendar year and starting that process. So a regular, and if I'm wrong on that, please, please correct me. A regular moratorium requires a public hearing, which requires more notice, a larger timeframe, and then you could do that for a six, initial six-month window with a six month extension. The 91 days is a result of the emergency component of this. So I guess I would ask the council, if you do table it, you could table it to January, and I think what your intention is, you're trying not to kill the discussion.
Okay.
But I don't know if, will the emergency component be there, or would the, a regular moratorium be the proper discussion, you know, after December 31st? I think what you could do is just table, table the item, a date to be determined, and the council could opt to pick it up again if you want, or table it indefinitely. You're taking action on it, you're not killing the item at your council level, so that you could revisit it if you so choose. Just some options. I think it's just challenging, given the timeframe you're looking at, it's the fact that it's an emergency, and then you don't want to obviously leave people hanging on what they could expect down the road.
Question, point of order, I guess, would it, if I were thinking it would make sense to propose amending it to be a 60-day moratorium, would it make sense to do that before we vote on tabling it, or wait for another time?
I mean, if we're going to table it, I guess it doesn't matter if it's 60 or 90.
Okay.
Because at the time that we revisit it, then we'd be deciding on the timeframe, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Council Seagull?
I guess, if it's...
So I guess we've all kind of discussed tabling this, so I'm not sure how people feel about that, but if anyone wants to make a motion to table it, or we can just, if there's no motion to table it, we can just vote on it right now?
I'll put forward the motion to table it.
Okay.
It sounds like more discussion needs to happen for everyone here.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second by Council Sims. And are we doing an indefinite, so we can bring it back whenever?
Yeah.
My, my hope and preference would actually be bring it back for December.
Mm-hmm.
If that doesn't actually work in January, but I don't think we should wait any later than January for it.
But where, the motion being made is, just sorry, point of order.
Yeah.
The motion being made is not identifying a specific date.
Yes, so that we, but my intention is either December or January.
All right, are you fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, I can tell you want to say something.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but I, just, I think in fairness, we're finishing the agenda, because, just the way this month is, with all the holidays and the fact that you're having a late meeting, the agenda is going to be worked on and composed this week. So if it, if there's no intention that it will come back December, I think you should make that clear, because that agenda will be published in the next day or two.
Okay.
So I think we should, if there's an intention to bring it back in December and have a conversation in two weeks, I'd make that very clear. If it's beyond that, I would make that very clear. But I, I have to work on and craft the agenda for the one and two, the meeting in two weeks, this week. Thank you.
Are you fine with it being January?
I guess I will just check for relative nods, or?
I, I think I'd be comfortable supporting the motion to have it table till January.
Okay, I'll see.
Any other discussion on, so the motion is second to table the item until January? Is there any discussion on that? All right, go ahead, Council.
Sorry, I just, does the town manager feel like we've given any direction?
Oh, thank you. I mean, if you, if your motion, if your amended motion prevails and it's table till January, that's the marching orders that we have. And we will, knowing that the council has tabled an item to further research it, now we know we will dive deeper into it and get you as much and everything of information as possible on it. And I'm not advocate for tabling it one way or another, but at least the public is aware of, you will consider it in January. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to vote on the, the motion to table till January? All those in favor? Seven ayes.
We need a motion.
We need a motion on.
We need to vote on the.
You just amended it, right?
No.
No, we did amend it.
You guys are burning.
Yeah, sorry.
Only two items in.
Don't worry, no amendments, just a.
2511-7, action to consider a rent control ordinance for mobile home parks, Council Seagull sponsor. Opposed Order 25112, order that the town council authorize the ordinance committee to review the issue of rate, rent stabilization and recommend an ordinance enacting the same to the full council. For motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Council Sims.
It sounds like. Yep, all of our discussion was kind of had in that last item, so I'd like to make a motion to table this till January, because I think they go one in, they go in hand, unless, Chair, do you feel otherwise?
No, I think that's.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to table till January.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council Sims. Any discussion on the motion to table the item? All right, all those in favor? Seven ayes.
Item 25, 202511-8, action to consider amending the land use and development code to restrict large-scale data centers, Council Lewis sponsor. Opposed Order 25113, order that the town council forwards to the ordinance committee for review and recommendation, amending the land use and development code to restrict large-scale data centers.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second by Council Hamblin. All right, Council Willis?
Yeah, from my perspective, the purpose of bringing this item forward tonight is pretty straightforward. Large-scale data centers have become a major topic of discussion, both locally and nationally, and I believe it's important for us to understand the issue thoroughly. My hope is that this opens the door for staff and council to get ahead of the conversation, evaluate our current ordinances, and put proactive regulations in place, rather than finding ourselves reacting after a proposal is already on the table here in Gorham.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments? Go ahead, Council Seagull.
Thank you. I would like to reiterate something Councilor Willis said there. There are currently no proposed data centers for Gorham. This is proactive. No one has a, no one has put forward a data center for Gorham.
Any other comments? Council Hamblin, go ahead.
I don't know much about AI data centers, so I got on the internet today. And it's kind of interesting what you see. The largest data center, AI data center in the world is 10 million square feet in China. The largest one in the United States is 7 million square feet in Nevada. They actually call a hyper, hypersized data, data center of 20,000 square feet with 5,000 servers. It is pretty interesting, the size of what's going on and everything out there. A very large data center uses 5 million gallons of water a day. That's the equivalent of, what, 50,000 residential houses we'd use in a day? So a data center can have a huge impact on an organization or a town such as us. There are, although, eight data centers in Maine, believe it or not. I never knew that till I looked it up. I don't know where they are, but it's in five different markets. So my only issue with this, I agree, we need to understand the data center impact to Gorham before we would even consider going with it. But I just worry about the, how it says, to restrict large-scale data centers? And I think large scale is very different from some people to us, to me, to you, to everybody else. I would love to see a number in there, some sort of quantification. Are we willing to allow smaller data centers, larger data centers, and put a, put a line in the sand type of thing, so that we don't scare people off, but at the same time, we, we're pretty clear on it.
I think that's good direction for the ordinance committee to look at. I think that's kind of, when I read this, was the determination of, like, same thing what you did, just the research, find out what's what. And I think that's good information for the ordinance committee to kind of discuss, you know, what would be large, what would be our definition of large for Gorham, not just, you know, like, for, you know, a big, you know, city or something like that. So I think that that's good information for the ordinance committee to discuss.
And I do want to note, all councilors are allowed to attend committee meetings, even if you're not on the committee, so, yeah.
And just one other point, if you don't mind. Just in the last few weeks, there's a lot of press out there that there's data centers being built all over the country right now, but they're not operating because there's not enough electricity and there's enough, not enough water. So some of these businesses are building a data center without any idea if they have the utilities to support it, so it's sitting there. And I'd hate to see us in that situation. I want to make sure we understand the size we could handle, and if we have the utilities to support it, if we're to move forward with it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor? Seven ayes.
Item 2025, 6-5, action to consider amendments to the land use and development code to allow for additional driveway curb cuts on low-traffic roads for accessory dwelling units, ordinance committee sponsor. Opposed Order 25114, order that the town council forwards to the planning board for public hearing and comments, amendments to the land use and development code to allow for additional driveway curb cuts on low-traffic road for accessory dwelling units as follows.
Motion to waive the reading due to the length?
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Council Sims. All right, all those in favor of waiving the reading due to the length? Seven ayes. And there are motion for the item?
So moved.
Motion by Council Seagull, is there a second?
Second.
By Council Willis, all right?
Thank you. Yeah, seems like you'll be hearing a lot from me tonight. So I'm taking this as chair of ordinance. So to be clear, when all motions come to ordinance, they need to come back to the council. And so the ordinance committee may vote to recommend something, may vote no action, or may vote to move something back to the council, even if the ordinance committee members don't actually like it. So this was brought forward a few months ago. There are some places, some houses in Gorham, that are on very large lots, that are building accessory dwelling units, and it, they would like another curb cut for another driveway, because it is basically too far from their existing driveway. And so this was a way of making sure that we allowed for those situations, but still minimized curb cuts, because more curb cuts was generally bad, for a number of reasons, whether it be increased accidents with cars coming in and out of multiple places, or it's less walkable, because if you curb cut the whole thing, then you have no sidewalk. So this was our way of, yeah, making sure that this wouldn't impact areas in the village. So you can see 5E, second curb cut shall not be allowed on lots with less than 100 feet of street frontage. So we really wanted to limit this to very specific ones. And it says here, second curb cut shall not be allowed on lots with less than 150% of the required street frontage as well. So we really wanted to limit this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I think we need to add into here, too, because I don't think people understand that there's two different types of curb cuts. One is local, meaning public works, and then there's state level, Route 25, 114, 22. Those all require state permits. They're two totally different things. Say, Flagy Meadow Road would be Terry Deering or the Municipal Center. Route 25 would be the state permit.
So, question for the town manager, this was only on local roads, or what did?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to look for a nod from the audience for my staff. My understanding is this would govern what we have control of or over at the local level. The state just automatically, if you're within the state jurisdiction, that they're going to handle it. But anything that we touch, as far as we say yea or nay on a curb cut, this would apply to.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't like this. My apologies.
Okay.
I don't like this. I'm going to be sure up. I think, I think it is very restrictive. I don't think it's going to come up very often, but this is not what I think accessory dwelling units were initially designed for. And we have backlot provisions, we have ways of breaking off lots, we have ways of doing things where you can have a second curb cut. But I think putting this into ADUs just feels like it's, it's taking, it's changing really what you want for an ADU, as in, like, an in-law, a secondary, a little tiny unit in addition, and now just making it just another house.
Council Sims?
Yeah, we, we talked about that. We, we talked about it in at least a couple of ordinance committee meetings. And I don't think any of the three ordinance committee members were particularly huge fans of it. That said, the staff came back every time and, and made additional edits to it, to try to make it more palatable. And I think to Councilor Seagull's point, we want to encourage, you know, ADUs that don't require additional curb cuts are a pretty great way to add some, you know, additional housing. That's not like, you know, tons of housing that's overwhelming the town, and it's providing some additional housing, which is really the only way to address the housing affordability challenges that we have, is having more housing. Now, the, you know, one thought that occurred to me, given the fact that we, after the last conversation, given the fact that we're, we're not necessarily wanting to incentivize these curb cut requests, I mean, could we add a reasonable fee for the curb cut on the ADU that would, you know, be a slight disincentive for somebody who's on the fence about it?
Thank you. I, I think generally speaking, no, any fee needs to cover our costs. We do a driveway entrance fee, I believe, anyway, for to cover public works time. It's a modest fee that just basically covers the staff time. But I, I will say, since this came up at the ordinance committee, I've seen three that I know about. I'm getting to five now.
I was going to say, I didn't know.
It's becoming more and more common. I will say, the three that I am aware of, it's a common, you have a house, you have a driveway on one side, ADU's on complete other side of the, of the property.
Yeah.
And it puts the homeowner in a situation that if they want vehicle access to any extent, they're building a driveway over the front of the lawn of the property, maybe on a septic, maybe not on a septic. It's just, there's all kinds of logistical concerns. So they are popping up more and more as people are taking advantage of ADU construction. I wouldn't say that they're everywhere, but I know there's, there's a lot of interest in it.
Yeah, I think it's just the, you know, the randomness of a lot and how a lot's set up.
Right.
But I think that most people would commonly, if they can use their driveway.
That's a good point.
You know what I mean? And they build an ADU right behind it, they're definitely going to use their driveway. They're not going to ask for another curb cut unless they need it, because they don't want to make, they probably like their grass and their yard, so they don't want to have to. So I, I think the people that need it are going to be the ones that use this, to not have to go driving around their yard to get to the ADU, so.
Yeah.
I think to your point, housing is expensive, and adding additional expenses for people to secure housing, so even just another permit fee is another fee that makes that ADU more expensive to get to. And if somebody can use an existing driveway, they would rather save the cost of the pavement or gravel or whatever they're going to use than put that in. And I think what, what gives me a willingness to move this forward, and I just want to confirm that I'm reading this correctly, that ultimately, 5F, this has to be approved by the public works director. So, correct, that it, somebody, in theory, if it does not make sense, the public works director could say, no, that does not make sense, even if it meets some of this criteria, but there's a reason that we have not considered in this.
Thank you, more or less. I mean, the, any of our staff, if it is allowed, they're not going to create a reason to deny it.
Right.
But if there's a legitimate reason, a safety reason, a visibility reason, anything like that, yeah, it's within staff's purview to say, no, timeout. You know, we'll try to help you, but you're not meeting the conditions here.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Council Dearborn?
Do that first. So shouldn't somebody kind of go out and say, okay, you want to put your? Is that part of this whole thing, that somebody's going to go out there first and say, okay, you can't put it here, but you can put it here?
Thank you. Yeah, they would apply for the permit, I think what we're, what we're seeing now is, despite, despite staff's efforts, people are going ahead, pulling the permit for the ADU, they're building the ADU, and they just earn the assumption that, well, I can put my driveway here, because it's common sense, you know, I, I don't want to tear up my yard, and I want to put it here. They're coming in, and public works is like, I can't give you the permit, the ordinance specifically says no, we're trying to find a way to straightface it, so, but yes, they'll go out ahead of time, ideally, and if they are allowed, that can be coordinated even further ahead with public works at their code office, when they pull a permit.
Any other questions?
So, being late to the game here, I, I think Gorham is supporting ADUs, we would like to see more ADUs.
We have to?
We have to.
Yeah, I mean...
So, overall, Gorham is allowing it, it's in the code, and we, we support more density housing, so an ADU would be a good thing, right? Am I right or wrong there?
Oh, thank you. I mean, the, the state dropped the hammer hard on the ability for a municipality to say no to accessory dwelling units. Gorham's ordinances have adopted to that through the council, so, yes, I guess the official policy of the town is, we allow ADUs according to state law, but to, I think the conversation that happened earlier, housing is expensive, that's why we're seeing more of these, because it's a cheaper alternative to put a family member in an ADU, or, I mean, there's one that was built just out here on Ball Park recently, they're popping up all over the place, it's just cheaper to build.
Okay, anyway, assume that trend's going to continue based on construction costs, so I kind of agree with the thought here that, I mean, the cost of a new driveway is going to drive the decision, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, why add another ordinance or complexity to it, let people decide when they do the ADU approve, go for the permit, talk to the town about it, and see if a new driveway is there or not, and I would guess, most cases, people are going to live within existing driveway, I would, just because of the cost. So, I have no problem moving this forward.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? One, Segal.
Item 2025, 6 dash 6, action to consider amending the streets and sidewalk ordinance to allow for overnight parking during the winter in certain districts, ordinance committee sponsored. Proposed order 25-115, order that the town council take no action until a developer seeks approval for specific on-street parking flexibility as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Councilor Sims. All right.
So, this was a motion brought to us by Councilor Sims to look at allowing overnight parking, as mentioned, during the winter. We spoke with town staff, and that would create logistics issues for especially public works, and basically realized it, it currently isn't an issue, and so, the idea here is, we just take no action, and then, if at some point in the future, yeah, developer would really want to use our on-street parking to mitigate the amount of parking they have to create, this can come back to us, but for now, just, you don't got to worry about it.
All right, any questions, comments?
The only comment I'd add is just to, you know, we had some good discussion about it at the, at the committee, and, you know, the, the intention here, certainly we're not trying to make anybody's life harder here, the intention here is kind of based generally around the fact that off-street parking lots don't generate property tax revenue, buildings generate property tax revenue. So, if we want our taxes to stop going up, we have to generate more property tax revenue on smaller amounts of land without requiring more infrastructure demands and costs, going along with that and canceling out the increased tax revenue. So, particularly in and around the village, you look at a place like Junction Bull, 30 dwelling units above it, the people who live there can walk across the street to Hannaford, there's not really many kids, school-aged kids living there, but if there were, they could walk across the street to village school. So, building housing within walking distance of daily needs, commercial needs, that's really the only way to address traffic concerns. If, if everybody is forced to drive everywhere, there's never going to be enough parking, there will always be traffic, and if you have a place that people want to be, there's probably going to be traffic anyways. But, any, anyway, I digress, but I think the, the way we're, they're approaching this now, there's no developers currently, you know, needing some sort of, you know, relief from the off-street parking requirements in the village, so, for the time being, it's not, if there is a case where a developer was wanting to build some housing down in the village area, and looking for some relief on the off-street parking, because it does add a significant amount of cost, making them pay of a bunch of parking spaces costs money, so, you know, the willingness to have some flexibility there, I think, is important, but at this time, there's, there's no specific need to, to, to deal with it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas.
Item 2023, 11 dash 12, action to consider instructing the ordinance committee to review the possibility of new school impact fees, ordinance committee sponsored. Proposed order 25-116, order that the town council take no action as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
By Councilor Kush. Go ahead.
So, I want to give a little background here. We looked at, we currently have a middle school impact fee, so when a new house is built in Gorham, they have to pay a, an impact fee specifically for the middle school, and so, we at the ordinance committee looked at if we could add impact fees for the elementary school and high school, because obviously, the kids are not just going to middle school. Through that, we learned, and town staff were, were very informative in terms of the very, 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 very specific rules there are for creating new impact fees. You need to have a specific project in mind, and then you need to specifically make that project bigger based on anticipated growth, and that amount of bigger that you're making the project, you then can take a percentage of that to create the impact fee. So, it, it is a very specific thing for very specific projects, and at this time, the school has no intent on any very large-scale projects as such, so, we're just kind of taking this off of our list.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one question, the impact fee on the middle school, does that go on forever?
No.
So, there's a timeframe, well, that will sunset.
Thank you, and I don't know it off the top of my head, so that, it was discontinued for a while, and that's why it was picked back up, and the, part of that term was, was picked back up, the years that it was not active, that's how, because obviously, the building's older, but it was, at the time, it was for the excess capacity that was built in the, into the building, the council 2010s, I think, probably forgetting the date, but discontinued it for a while, and then it was reactivated, and it will be sunset in its management. Basically, we take the fees in, and the school department uses it to pay down everything, so, I'd have to check it, but it's pretty close if we're still actively collecting on it.
So. Other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Seven yeas. All right, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
By Councilor Kush. All those in favor? Seven yeas. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.